January 6th, 2013. Want to vote? Take your minute for any comments.
Okay.
You can vote for Jessica. If we vote. Do you say your motion?
Yes.
Is there a second? I got a question, I don't know if we'll put it in. We make a motion, we have a second, and then we open it for comments. So is there a second? Fine. Any changes, questions, or comments?
Under Arts' permit.
Second page?
Yes. Didn't we say that all of the conditional uses were not applicable? Or didn't we say that some of them were applicable but already taken care of because of the previous business?
It appears as if standards A through M are not applicable. It's written that A through M are not applicable.
Yeah.
And that would be page 85?
Yes.
Well, A obviously is not, no sparring. There's no shortcut, B is out. The use is consistent with the comprehensive plan, yes it is. So that's fine. D, traffic access to the site, that's fine. AOT has already approved that, so that's good. E, the site design is in conform with the law, municipal flood, blah, blah, blah. It's not a flood zone.
Right, right.
Okay, so that's...
So there's three.
That's NE.
Or NA.
F, adequate provision for the disposal of all wastewater and septic system, correct? That's good. G, blah, 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 blah. There'll be no hazardous material, so that doesn't apply. H, stormwater drainage system capable of handling 25 years. What do we say about this? Well, it happened originally, well, I don't know what they had. What kind of stormwater plant does you have when you first put that shit up?
I don't think we have one. That was 2005. Thinking that was maybe 2005.
Well, the exterior of the building is not being altered, correct? So, we're all set. No, it's adequate provision, or a system was when they first put the building in, it was addressed. And because the exterior of the building is not being changed, then it's still good. There's a little soda rose temptation being made. Were you going to clean up the site anymore?
No, nothing other than, you know, trying to paint a new project. Possibly some landscaping now I can do.
Well, again, the exterior of the building is really not changing. Yeah, so I think we're fine there too. So that's fine, that's good. And that applies, and it's fine. Water supply has gone so well, correct? That's good. So that applies, and it's good. Buffer's shoes on the... Well, it's... Yeah, K's fine. L, all the forces... L's fine. And M is not applicable. Applicable, alright? So now we got, we're all set. You happy?
Yeah. Yeah, that's exactly what I did.
That's what I thought too. Any other changes, corrections, comments? Alright, also favor A. Also pose an A. It's a done deal. What was that?
D.
Schedule for inspection and...
17.
D. The description of routing and non-routine. Did you mean the description of routine and non-routine maintenance? That'd be my guess. Alright then, we're all set. Now, stormwater ordinance. We've got the new copy of the stormwater ordinance with all the changes we've made. There's various colors, there are various colors. The chance to... I don't know if we want to go through it tonight. Yeah, you're right. Well, fine. If we were going to peruse this tonight, we'd have to sit here and go through every page with the stuff we already got done. Do that at home, that's your homework. Unless somebody has some issues with something that's jumped out at them. The next copy we're going to get of this is just going to be... After we've made a decision on... Yeah, we're going to need time to look at this on your own. Because the next time we meet, after Art's public hearing, we'll take a vote on this stormwater ordinance and see how we like it. Because apparently, we have to get it upstairs by the end of the month. Some hocus pocus that, you know, I don't know where this is coming from. This friggin' state is driving me nuts. So, so between now and two weeks, go through this, and if there's any things that haven't been in there, or you have any issues with it, make a note of it so that we can deal with those before we come to some kind of a vote on it, alright? Any questions, comments? So, the timeline for this little piece of work is... Oh, you know what we need to do? Let's pick a informational meeting for, how about the 7th? Of February, what kind of times they give us to put in the other bit? Should give us all we want, right?
Because it's informational, we can do it as soon as we want.
Well, we still have to give, it's at least 10 days, maybe 14, I don't know. Anytime we get together like that, we try to give an extra amount of time.
And then we give it a 20 minutes for the final, final vote, that's the drop-in.
Of February.
21st.
Super.
So if you have the hearing the 7th, you have 20 minutes.
Well, actually, so we don't have to really vote on it at the end of next meeting. If we're just having an informational meeting.
I think you do.
Oh, yeah, that's right, if we're giving it to the selectmen by the 3rd of August.
Because this says that you can't move forward with anything until this better majority vote of someone. So it has to be one of those four criteria. So there has to be a majority vote before it can be presented, before it can be posted, before...
As an official change, right now we're talking about... Let's see. Any amendments to this ordinance may only be adapted by a majority vote, so... A proposal for an amendment to this ordinance may be initiated by... Okay, that's what this is, a proposal.
Words like...
Yeah, well, fine. We'll vote on it after Art's public hearing next meeting. We'll have an informational public discussion on February 7th. And we'll see where it's at. See if there's anything we have to revisit and change. Otherwise, we'll fire off a copy after the meeting. Well, it's really costing us publishing in the smart shopper. It's cheap without a newspaper.
Well, we put it, it's about $20 in the Journal Tribune if we put it in the legal notices, which is where it belongs. Whereas in the smart shopper, it's a little more...
We give it a nice little...
Little more presentation.
Yeah. Much easier to find. You have to be looking for it in the Journal Tribune and the legal notice section.
Exactly.
Which is all such fine print stuff.
And Jen thought that Joe Tribune is where this is where we're looking for it, so...
They'll be at the dump looking at the sign I put up, that's what they'll be looking for in the Journal Tribune. Oh, Jesus, I hope she didn't hear me. Alright. So, between now and the next meeting, please this baby. And, yeah.
I don't know, I think it's the way the timing comes out.
Oh, the news just being once a week, maybe?
Right, once a week, so to get it within the 10 days, it usually ends up being like 14.
And it can't be too far ahead of time. Yeah, 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 so it's...
So the Journal Tribune where it comes out every day, it's easier to hit that target.
Where's your catch? There's always a catch. Ken, you got anything for us? We're really marking this up, right?
Making changes.
Well, make sure that we... Hey, now if anyone has anything substantive, let Brenda know, and maybe she could email us before the next meeting. Ken. Or Jack Doe, anybody. Alright?
Any, that notion that we had previously of including first order streams, that would step on the toes of this expansion of the RP district, would it not?
Yeah.
Unless you broke it off to two separate articles.
But it was still true to the necessity to...
Do the mailing.
So it was, yeah, which we're planning on not doing right now.
Yeah, I mean, that's something we could have thought about at budget season too, to add. I forget what it cost the last time we... Because last time was such a major amount, I think we notified everybody in town, not just the shoreline, because we didn't want to miss anybody. So that was a huge mailing.
It's about $2,800. It would be brutal to try and...
Really? $2,500?
13.
Yeah. How many property owners in town do you have here?
Jen said it's about 2,700 households.
27.
So you figure, what is the stamp now, 45 cents?
Is it easy to pick out which ones are RP shoreline?
No. None of it's a comprehensive.
It really isn't.
So we don't almost have to...
Because they're like little pockets.
Yeah, so we'd almost have to send it to everybody just to make it...
That's what we did last night, just send it out and everybody got it, but that generated...
Oh, yes, yes.
Hundreds of calls from people that weren't always near everybody.
Alright. Anyone else? Anything? Any new business? Nothing? TC?
I was hoping to raise that issue of the first order streams, but we're going to have to time that so it can be in conjunction with a long mailing or something.
Are you thinking about this year though, before?
No.
Oh, okay, okay.
I would like it, it should have been...
Well, maybe.
We had it all ready to go, there was some objection upstairs.
Well, if we decide to include the whole town in this stormwater ordinance next year, then we can throw that in net. I mean, that would give us a good place to put it, other than its own little standalone thing. But anyway, so you're what?
My thinking was that it would be a nice thing to balance the perception if it does arise of... Which would not be justified in any way, that we're somehow or other picking on shoreline property owners. If there was something in the balance to say to the inland property owners, property owners in the old rural districts, or whatever you want to call it, that there was a new stream protection on first order streams. It might not upset somebody.
It'd just make more people upset.
Yes, but an equal...
Yes. They'd all be mad. That's a sad...
Alright, can I ask about...
Yes.
The total overall area of impervious surface, a lot of, see, 20% of the lot area located... This happens to be the resource protection district. I mean, that means if there's a hundred acre... On page 2. 4.2.2.7. Yeah? So that, does that mean that if the lot's 100 acres, you can have 20 acres of impervious surface?
If you've got 20 acres within RP...
If you've got 10 acres...
10 acres, you can have 2 acres of impervious surface.
You probably couldn't find a lane juice permitted to make 20 acres of impervious though.
Right.
All you can do in the RP is timberhoppers, basically, there's a few other things.
Yeah, there's not, you can't have a home in there. You can't, it's very limited what you can do, and it's almost next to nothing.
Shoreline or commercial B.
The 20% is all through the ordinance already. I think there's one of the commercials, you can go up to 50% though.
Commercial B is 20%. I'm just looking at the...
It's right there, shoreline, it's not in shoreline, so...
The commercial B is because we want to do the stormwater ordinance.
Since it's highlighted, does that mean the highlighting and yellowing is the first draft with changes, right?
If it's yellow, it came out of the first draft to be added. If it's underlined, it's stayed, if it's struck, it was voted out at some point.
So it's underlined also, so it's... Underlined or crushed up.
Right.
On page 2, the first two sections of yellow are all underlined. 4227, 4228. But down towards the bottom, you see the word undeveloped. Where you put that in and then decide against it, apparently.
No, actually, that existed in the, that exists here, and it was decided to...
To take it out.
To omit that, so it's highlighted because it's a change, and then it's struck to show that it's taken out and moved.
Underlined and highlighted, it's in. And it was added, if it's highlighted in yellow, it was added in the first draft.
Anything that's underlined is being added. Depending on whether it's yellow, blue, or pink.
Because when we roll this into the ordinance, you won't have the colors. It will just be underlined if it was added and struck. So you won't have the colored.
Brenda? Prior to your joining us, we had quite an overrun in the adoption of some new zoning ordinance work. And we were asked to delineate in color all of the changes...
In the ordinance?
That we were bringing to the people.
Also, they won't want just underlined and struck?
Well, I'm just suggesting, just reflecting on the amount of controversy that we ran into before, for maybe the informational meetings, it might be good if there was several copies of this.
And that's what we thought, Jen thought that possibly we could provide these in colors, like what you have here.
But we don't need three colors, that's just going to confuse people.
Right, we won't have, we'll just have one color to show what became, because they don't care about the permission.
No, no, no.
First draft, second draft, you have because you wanted to know where it came from.
Well, we must, we were, there was a lot of controversy about the changes, and they wanted them clearly deleted.
If we provided this for them, but this is going, it's going to, translates into 104 pages with all the changes that we have. So, so we're going to have to have these too?
No, just this.
No, 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 just this. Not? Yeah, 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 yeah. No, just the changes. Not the whole book, just the changes, because that's all they're voting on. Oh, and no question about it, I don't care what anybody else says. I'm drawing a line at that.
Well, the selectmen want for their presentation, they want three double-sided copies, so we can do that for them. Because I can bring that, that doesn't have to walk to a printer.
They've got a zoning book.
The reason why we did it before was because it was such a comprehensive change, you guys, you know what I'm saying?
You'd be surprised, I've already started rolling it into, you'd be surprised how many pages are affected by this.
Oh, yeah.
So a lot of pages.
No, I understand.
Right.
That's why we don't want to incur that kind of expense.
Right. And all it's going to do, you know, if we make three copies or 100 copies, it's just going to mess people up. It's going to be one more book that's going to be out there with all kinds of stuff in it, and decide to be official book after June, you know? Because it's going to have plus and minus, after June, it's just going to have the plus, none of the minus that can be there anymore. So...
Well, then how, okay, so...
The public gets something like this to look at.
Well, if you notice that, the first, the first article 2 talks about changing the use table quite a bit.
Right.
It's going to, so, would you want me to put those changes in here so they can see, or will they have to look back and forth?
As a rule, they don't even look back and forth, all we've ever done is given them this. We tell them what is in the ordinance now for that particular section we're looking at, what we're taking out, and what we're adding.
So they'll just get this with one color?
Yes. Because see, this is available online, folks, online, free, correct?
It is.
Free, I might add. So put some ink in your printers, make yourselves some copies. Because I'm not giving you all. Alright, so, we're all set?
We're all set.
Okay. Anything else? Anybody on this? We're all happy with the progressive, follow the way things are going to be, blah, 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 blah?
The purple in the blue, which was one second and third, was...
On the first page, I said.
Yeah. And I only left that in there for this, because sometimes something came into the first draft, you struck it out in the second draft, or changed it in the second draft, and I thought if I just pulled these out, you might say, well, whatever happened to such and such? So I needed to leave, this is everything you've done in one... But what we'll do for next week's football and for the public will be just what you're adding or what you're... Example. So it'll be a lot cleaner.
And hopefully sh...
It'll be shorter. What I was wondering, it's like this on...
Although actually, no, it won't be that much shorter, because we're still going to put in... Everything that's underlined, everything that's lined out there, and see what we're taking out.
Right.
All this is going to have to be in. So there's going to be something that's...
But I was wondering, like, this definition, and I looked myself, is in there, and nothing has changed. It's exactly the same that's in there, so I don't know why it was here. Unless it was just something that you needed to be made aware of at some point, or something, I don't know. But I was wondering, do we leave things like that, there's no change to that.
Well, you know, as a matter of fact... It adds a little bit of context, I, well, but, you know, the head of his definitions, and here's a new definition. These other two, oh yeah, this is going to be the definition section. The next page, when we talk about RP, you got dimensional requirements, which don't change at all, but then you've got the next two things that have been added. So, you know, I don't know, I think we get where we are in that. No, that's right, this is available online. So, yeah, no, 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 we don't need these things. What is in this, as long as you're sure that...
Well, I was, and I was so afraid that maybe there was one more word, and I looked, and there's six lines here, and there's six lines up there, so...
Well, if it's something that's already available online to the townspeople, then we don't have to include it. Just the additions and subtractions, and obviously, you know, the title's...
Right.
Makes sense?
It's probably in there, JP maybe probably, in his process of doing things, just was going along, just in his mind, cleared things through.
Right, to give it some context maybe, you know, just to leave a couple of things in there, but, you know, I don't know if we really need to. Especially, you know, the subdivision definition, we don't need that in there.
I don't need to talk about the impervious surface definition. So I remember they come up on the McAdam, and the...
20%, I mean, it seems like there ought to be an upper, no more than some about 20%. You know, somebody, and I don't know, resource protection, commercial B, I guess is a pretty limited zone anyway. Who's there to talk about this?
Oh, blah, 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 we... What did we talk about this? Well, we've got a whole article here that explains the various...
Plus you've got that mapped. Or districts, actually. Commercial B is just north of...
It's down near Anderson Store.
Yeah, I mean, we're kind of from a little bit this side of the store to right to the hamster quarters. But it's all on the north side of...
Which is closer to any island, except for the river.
I'm just, I mean, I'm not that we have any land suitable for it, but it's, you know, it's a fairly substantial greenhouse operation in Madison. A couple of some inkers raising tomatoes and stuff like that. If somebody wanted to do something like that, and again, I don't know if it would fit in... Is there suitable lands or something like that in that particular zone? You know, 20 acres might not be... Well, but certain situations.
At RP?
Yeah, if you're still talking RP, you can't do it, I'm talking commercial B. Well, I will have to cross that bridge when we come to it, I guess. Now, yeah, I'm not, I'm just, it seems like there ought to be an upper... That's just for discussion today. 20% can be...
That's just for discussion, can't you, 20% of it can be a pretty substantial amount of real.
No, no residential uses can be 30%.
I have a question on that first Article 2 there, in rereading that.
Establishment of districts?
Yeah. First of all, I can't find, under the new citation that JT is instructing us to plug in the disturbance of land exceeding thresholds subsection 5.255. I can't find that reference.
Where it came from?
Well, I can't find 5.255, it's 5.251 and 2.
Those references is down there.
Well, see, that's...
How does that, how would, if you both only narrows in the numbers to...
That is the, you may have taken that, uh...
Time wonder, something that we first hand taken out.
And may not have been changed the last time we changed the book. Let's see, the social, uh, districts, that's two, down here. Where were we gonna put it in?
It was, it's in the land use chart, he's just saying, saying devise a new line in the land use chart after the entry of the government under local uses. But then, in zoning laws, which is, I saw the money's referencing, there is no section 5.255.
Well, and you know what else we should have, we should have this little picture. Where we're gonna put that in, because right now, I didn't know what it was talking about, I didn't know that it meant to put a line in here.
Yeah, it should be...
It says, it tells you to do it, but still, we ought to have a picture up in here.
The one before and the one after?
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Okay.
Well, and we may even need the banner at the top, delineating the zones, because...
Yes, oh yeah, definitely. Because without, so we like this page, but I just like, you know, one or two ahead of where it's gonna be. We're gonna like this, and throw in the, throw in the, it's key too.
The zoning citation, yeah.
Because I think we can get away with just using, are they all dealing with rural? Rural uses. Show, you know, yeah, showing commercial B, resource protection districts. Showing the new uses, uh, disturbance of land exceeding commercial, no, that's what we... Oh, wait a minute, could the, could he be alluding to one of the previous installments? Or is he going back to the original one? Did that number 5.25?
No.
Oh, wait a minute, it did. It does. 5.25, yeah.
In the normal tone?
No, in, in a, in a previous, kind of 2012 draft, which was, in our new draft that you gave us tonight, it would be...
Oh, you were looking in the zoning book, and he was talking about, well, now, if it's in here, it should, it should be in the zoning book too, though. Yeah, it's page 5.25, page 5, so part B and C. Is it the August, the August one? Or in the brand-new one, 5.25, which is on page 7, I think, on page 5. In the new one, it's on page 7. So, there's this.
Yes, that's on page 5.
Yeah, but the A and B are on page 7.
5, A and B.
Now, uh, should be in this one.
So it's still down there.
Oh, okay, this is why, if you look at 5.25 in our existing zoning available online, we only have a couple, uh, two paragraphs. So we're adding a whole bunch to this. So that's why you're not finding some of this other stuff, we do have a 5.25, but not the...
It's under X.
We only have 1 and 2, and then a note, we added a whole bunch, we added, you know, 1 through 6 to this. Then we took out the note, and we took out projects, oh no, we added projects here to the end of that. And we, yeah, this is the, this is, essentially we add the most to.
It's referencing new work.
Yes, yeah, yeah, yeah. Alright?
With clarity, I agree with what you proposed there, that we're gonna look some, some of the latest travel.
Just grab this.
Then like, anything that hasn't been changed or added to is okay to remove, like all of this? Or no, just leave it there?
I agree with you, to give it some context, it might help to leave some of that in.
Yeah, pretty much what we've got, except for, we don't need all these definitions. The rest of this, Jen, because most of, yeah.
The rest of it, right.
Yes, it does. Whereas these definitions don't really, you know, we've already got them in there, it's no big deal, this subdivision, we're not gonna worry about that at all. But, this erosion, certainly, this, we've already, this shows, we've already addressed some of this stuff. But we're cleaning up, we're cleaning it up and expanding on it. So, this first page, fill those guys in there, that takes care of this. Alright, Art, you okay with that? That was your question, wasn't it? About disturbance of land, article present, yours, you were, you were the caller, so...
This was to him.
Oh, it was you? So you're fine with that, though?
Yes, sir.
We're gonna throw in this page, yeah, plug these little rascals in.
Yeah.
Alright.
And that, that will allow us, I think, to do away with the two catalyzed sentences there, because we're gonna be showing it.
Yes, and because, yeah, they don't really count, they're not gonna be in the ordinance. These are just directions on what to do, alright?
So we actually do it, plug it in there?
Yeah, yeah, but you know, might as well.
Because that'll be the way it will appear to the law.
It'll be, it's gonna add a little bit, but it's like...
But she's taking out whatever tools.
Well, yeah, well, we're gonna be at this, half of this page. Anyone else jump by in the area, this is long overdue for us.
I think that, I think that just came upstairs, I think it's popping up in here, I think it just got borrowed and worn.
Yeah, it's gonna have to do with us.
I'll get it back to Jen.
Kenny, anything jumping at you right away, any big alarm errors?
No, I think we're not calling it significant and insignificant.
Oh.
Correct, we basically eliminated that.
I believe, I thought we did, because I think it just muddied the waters.
Yeah.
The just person, your knowledge, yeah, yeah. We have the gist of what were, what was added, we just didn't, yeah, because it was confusing us.
The meat and potatoes of, uh... It involves, you know, our biscotti is on page, where is it? Uh, is, which is what we went on the last time. I think there's some little, any of the headers.
You know, I don't know that we need all these things either for this. I think we can have the title, and we're changing H.
And I.
H, and I, right. Uh, yeah, we don't need the rest of this stuff, because we're not changing it, we're not looking at it, that's already locked and stored. In the old book, available online, 3.
So a lot of the stuff that's not underlined or highlighted, we can pull out of this.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, I'm looking at page 9, performance gear, I mean, the whole, almost on page 9.
I think a lot of it was just...
I can see, leave the 6639 in the title, and then plug in D, and just put that one in the sentence. That's all we need, we don't need these other things, because...
I thought some of it put in, just so we could find out where it was, since it's the definitions, but, uh, but I mean, we can pull out page 2, subdivision.
Yep, one guard.
Tida major.
We are.
Impervious services on page 1.
Yep.
So we can get it down to just the few pages.
You know what, just let them know that we have a lot of this already in there, let's leave this stuff here.
Does this sustain?
Yeah, leave this, because it deals pretty close with that.
Okay, so that's page?
Karen, on page 4, do you think it's necessary to have everything from like ABC, paragraph 2 on? Or is that something we can take out too, or should we leave it in for context? Just to show that some of this stuff was already addressed? And that you know, we're not just hitting for something out of the blue that's gonna wipe them out.
I, we can almost do two versions, one where we get it down to just strike out and underlines, and it's just two pages when we need to make 50, 100 copies for whoever shows up, the public hearing. Eventually, if it passes, we're gonna need to merge it in here anyways, but...
Well, for this first informational meeting, maybe we'll leave it in.
Yes, it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then we get to the hearing?
Yeah, we get down the road, and it's the official thing, that we don't do this other stuff. Because by that time, they will have all downloaded this for free.
There's probably more strikeout than there is underline, there's a lot of strikeout in here.
Although page 6 is a lot, is all underlined for the most part, so that's, and that's...
Page 10's all strikeout.
And this one takes care of, this, yeah, so we're talking about this, that's already bingo, and then... On, uh, 7 there, page 7, um... Does that, that, the operations and maintenance plan shed out at a minimum will identify the following, that mean either the CEO or the planning board can require additional conditions or requirements? Where are you? Page 7, number 7 in the...
The flicker.
Yeah? Did you start? Page, showing, uh... So is that, I mean, I'm looking at the at a minimum part, does that mean it can, additional things can be required? Or, yes, such as? It has to have at least this, somebody designing this may have, they may put more stuff into it that maybe we haven't thought of. Okay. But it has to at least have this, so that would, in order to satisfy us, but somebody can have more if you choose to. Sure. But, you know, there's nothing we like better than overkill. Come on, we're the state of Maine.
Actually, that's that same type of routine under D, distribution number 13, really good routine.
Oh, that we looked at that already. Oh, that's right, because that, because purple is the last color used, yeah.
Yeah, that's mine. You took that out of the dorm.
Or if that's how those you might spell it.
No, I couldn't, I couldn't copy and paste because it's PDF, so I had to actually type it, so that's my typo.
You know, actually, a few years ago, when I was doing, putting aside ordinance together, I did physically copy and paste, because I couldn't do this kind of stuff. So, I gave these guys, the original copy is just these different ordinances from different towns, in different friggin' fonts, glued on a piece of paper, and then, copies are like, it's something that would...
That's got to sound...
Yes, that's exactly what it was. So I just want you to know that it still is being used by the mud dates.
I'm sure that's what my first thought came wanting.
It was a hunch, by the way. Alright, so, yeah. I'm happy as a clam. If any more of these things jump by between now and the next week, make a note of it.
Yes, sir.
Kenny, would you just look over Article 2?
I almost got it.
I'm just curious about, I'm just curious about the, uh, the, what would now be designated as permitted uses not needing your review when we're talking about disturbance of land of less than or equal to 10,000 square feet on, just pulling this up as an example, in any zone other than surely and commercial B or resource protection.
Yeah, I think that's what's happened when you have the draft, you don't realize how much holes are in it, loopholes, until you actually use it for a year, and things like that may jump out, you're talking about the gravel pits.
Well, that's what, that's where the less than or equal to 10,000 square feet comes in, I guess, but...
Yeah.
I'm just thinking about some commercial laws that you, it seems to me that you may want some perview in some of those zones that are being... That are permitted? Designated as being permitted now, under JT's proposal. Well, now...
I guess we're covered when it says must comply with all applicable land use standards.
So you got 100 square feet in part B and part C, 2,000 square feet on slopes greater than 15% or less than or equal to 10,000 square feet on slopes of 15% or less. That's what you're talking about?
Yeah, but he's, he's applying language that maybe isn't sharp enough, because when he says disturbance of land, I'm looking at the article as it's written in Brenda's copy that she gives this evening. Disturbance of land cover exceeding thresholds of section 5.25, section 5, subparts B and C. Well, the thresholds, are the thresholds merely the square footage? The numerical thresholds are, is the thresholds, the whole notion of activities that are located in surely and commercial B or resource protection districts?
I think it's, I think it's talking about in B on page 7, if it ends less than 100 square feet of impervious surface. So, I think those are the thresholds we're talking about, and the next, and the one in C, I think we're talking the slope.
The 2,000 and the 10,000.
Yeah, and the 10,000, yeah, I think those are the thresholds it's, yeah.
That, I think that needs to be sharpened up somehow or other, in the, in the verbiage, after the cover of disturbance of land, exceeding, um, square foot threshold, or something like that. Maybe, Kenny, I think that needs some...
Well, what it's gonna be is, it's gonna be this new line or two, right, more uses.
I'm with you, but the, the line item is gonna read something along the lines of what Brenda has printed out here.
Right, the service of land exceeding.
And I, and I think, for clarity's sake, for us and for the advocate, it would...
We should put the...
You may wanna just say exceeding, uh, square footage thresholds, something along that line, so they're not getting confused with... so they're not getting confused with the other so-called thresholds that are involved in that verbiage on the B and C. Because, anybody else see what I'm fetching up on there?
Disturbance of land exceeding square foot thresholds.
Or, or, or land area thresholds, something like that. Or area, just exceeding area thresholds, as to delineating section 5.25, that's section B and C. So you don't care about the zone, you just care about the, the so-called within there.
Right. So, I mean, is that, with that amendment land use chart, by adding the following use to the list, under rural uses, above the term gardening. So that means, urban space, agriculture, application, most roads are sludge and residuals, all become...
No, 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 he just, JT is just indicating where he proposes to insert that into the chart.
Oh, okay. And what it would be, would be after...
Disturbance of land.
Yes, but we would have to, but disturbance of land happens in a lot of areas. Yeah, but we're talking specifically disturbance of land that's gonna affect stormwater runoff, exceeding these areas. Yeah, so, what we wanna do is maybe, if, I'm afraid if we make this category too big, it's gonna get too cumbersome, but...
We're gonna wanna make a copy of the chart and show the I's and the P's.
Yes, 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 that's, that's what we talked about doing, maybe doing this whole first page there, and plugging in, after gardening, this new thing, but like Tom says, we may have to make it a little more, uh... I just think it needs a word, way, uh, within the area threshold, something like that.
Would it be too much to just plug in the actual numbers?
Yeah, that's, yeah, I think that's gonna make it too cumbersome, don't you? Because that would be, we'll be adding B and C, page seven, that's... Yeah, we're, yeah, I think that's gonna make it too cumbersome.
My, my initial question there, that these Kenny's eyes on it, is, are we letting some kind of a disturbance proposed to be permitted under this language that ought to receive CEO?
Are you bringing back in the 10,000 cubic yards, is that what you're thinking?
Um, well, yeah.
Because that is a conditional use in the shoreline, the resource protection, and little ospey, which is really all this ordinance is covering. So in, um...
Read those three again to me.
Less than, um...
Shoreline, RP, little ospey.
Yep, is a conditional use, if it's less than 10,000 cubic feet. If it's greater than 10,000, then it's not permitted in shoreline, little ospey, or RP.
So, but if it's less than...
It's conditional use through you guys.
And would be, would be, would we be picking that up with his language? That's what I'm wondering.
Yeah, so if it's greater, it's not permitted anyways, the gravel dents, basically, is what it's talking about. If it, if the ordinance was full of all the districts in town, I'd say you're right, there, there could be a, um, the less than 10,000 is permitted in two, four, six, eight, nine other districts. The three districts that this is really pertaining to, it's a conditional use. So I, I think we're also, I said, it's gonna take a year of enforcing and using it to really find out and come back and make changes to...
Maybe we ought to just leave the sentence that he has right there, after gardening, put in another box that says disturbance of land exceeding thresholds of sections 5.25, uh, subparts B and C. And see what happens, yeah, see what happens. And if we can fine tune it, then we can always change, uh, the vote after, after we've fine tuned it. But that, you know, that's gonna, that tells us exactly what we're doing. And it draws our attention to where this session's at. Let's just try that, see what happens. And if we find a better way to work it between now and next meeting, or after the public informational here meeting, then, uh, we'll change it.
Yeah, at first, I was wondering why he was bringing up the B and C versus just the, uh, you know, the five, 5.25, five. His B and C refers to the whole thing. You have to, uh, meet all of those to be exempt. He's just talking the thresholds, again, it's all he's talking, those 100 square feet, or the, uh, 2,000 square feet, or the 10,000.
Right. Anything else, anybody? Robert? You know, it's all...
I second that one.
Two weeks.
Thank you, yo.
Public informational meeting, make me upstairs.